Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Monday, June 3, 2024. Board of Trustees for the Village of Deerfield, roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jerry. If we could all rise, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a couple proclamations that I'd like to read and present. The first proclamation is for Juneteenth. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas our nation was conceived on July 4, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas at 2:00 p.m. on New Year's Day, January 1, 1863, using his war powers as President, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforward, forward, and forever free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made a permanent abolition of slavery, a Union War aimed at providing the legal frame, abolition of slavery, a Union War aim, and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves as the Union armies advanced. And whereas hearing of the proclamation, many slaves escaped to the Union lines as the army units moved south. And whereas on June 19, 1865, about two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of the Civil War and slavery with this announcement. The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves, and the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor. The freedmen are advised to remain at their present homes and work for wages. They're informed that they will not be allowed to collect a military post, and they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere. And whereas the Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical readings, some communities purchased land for Juneteenth celebrations, such as Emancipation Park in Houston, Texas, and as freed families immigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carry the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas in 2021, the state of Illinois made Juneteenth an official state holiday. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Daniel C. Shapiro, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth in the Village of Deerfield, proclaim this third day of June 2024. Do I have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is passed. And do we have someone from the library here to accept
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'd just like to invite everybody to our June 17 program with, to cover the topic of Juneteenth. It is at 1:00 p.m. at the Deerfield Public Library, and we are very honored and excited to present that. So, thank you.
Amy, who do you have here tonight?
I have with me, from the Adult Services Department, Jasmine and Anne, who are coordinating that program, and then Steph Scaletta, our Communications Manager.
And Amy's the executive.
Oh, and I'm the Director. I just figured you all knew who I was.
And Anne, you gave a wonderful speech during our Memorial Day celebration and ceremony. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. It was an honor to do it.
Of course.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is Pride Month. Whereas the battle of dignity, equality, and personal safety for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning people is reflected in the tireless commitment of the LGBTQ community, as well as dedicated advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. And whereas President Bill Clinton, on June 2, 2000, declared June Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June 1969 Stonewall uprising in Lower Manhattan. And on June 1, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration further by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas LGBTQ Americans, including those who live in our local communities, face hate and discrimination simply for being who they are or who they love, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every person. And whereas the landmark Supreme Court decision of 2015 guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states was a historic victory for LGBTQ Americans and continues to affirm our belief that we are all more free when we are treated as equals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Daniel C. Shapiro, hereby proclaim June 2024 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Pride Month. In the Village of Deerfield, encourage all community residents to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists and to celebrate our great diversity by celebrating our LGBTQ friends and neighbors. Proclaim this third day of June 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
David, can we have someone, you want to have someone take your picture?
Yes.
Okay.
Way to go, Anne. What a jump button there.
Sign her up.
Well, Bob should be in the picture with this tie.
Oh, that's true.
Uh-huh.
Maybe she should make David wear it on his T-shirt.
Good evening. I wanted to announce a few pride activities we have going on this month. We have pride flags up at Village Hall and Public Works. Thank you, Public Works. We have the banners at the corner of Waukegan and Deerfield Road. The Fine Arts Commission is sponsoring the library's Queer Poem a Day podcast, which is award-winning, I hear. And the Community Relations Commission is hosting a Pride Day at the Farmer's Market on the 15th. We have pride bags to give out with the village logo. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Go fast, get it.
We pass a lot of proclamations, and they're all great, but I feel like these two are particularly significant and important, and I'm real proud of us doing this and celebrating these things in the way that we're doing, so.
And I would want to mention that the library has been doing the Queer Poem a Day broadcast, the podcast, for what, four years now?
I think it's close, it is four.
It's four. And the friends of the library also do support it, and have from the beginning. So, this is not something that's new. It's something we've been doing and that there's a commitment to in the community. So, it's good to know.
Next on our agenda is the appointment of Dave Brown to the Plan Commission. I'm real proud and grateful and honored to ask for this appointment to Dave. He's been a volunteer and member of various entities or groups of our village over a number of years, been very active, thoughtful, smart guy, and I know he's going to be a terrific addition to the Plan Commission. So, do I have a motion to accept his nomination?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Dave. Who do we have here with you?
My daughter, Alice, and we're coming from J.C. Park. We had a T-bone tonight.
Nice. Well, congratulations. I hope that was fun for both of you. And Alice should be real proud of her dad. All right. Thanks.
Thanks to the board, understanding that our distribution got out a little bit late on that particular piece. So, again, apologize for that, but we'll do better next time.
Motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting of May 20, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Our M.C. was first.
Okay. That's fine.
There was a day when you were slower on the draw. Now, you're fast on the draw.
Good.
Yeah, good.
She's been practicing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Treasurers' report, Eric.
This is the April 2024 Treasurers' Report. It represents the third of, a third of the year. Nothing really unexpected this month, but I will give you just a few highlights or explanations of some things. The net sales tax decreased from the prior month. That is typical for this time of year. Last month's receipts relate to December sales, and this month's receipts relate to January sales. So, we kind of expect to see that fall off, and we do historically see that. Water and sewer billings continue to reflect lower usage months, again, typical this time of year. Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels. Electric utility tax, you probably remember last month, we got that late, so we didn't have one last month, but we have two this month. So, catching back up on the electric utility tax for the year there. State income tax is consistent with the prior year's same month. We will expect to see quite a big increase next month. That's because most of us file our taxes and pay a bill in April, which the state then in turn distributes out to the municipalities in May. So, expected there as well. Notable expenditures in April include construction and engineering costs. Public Works put a new five-ton truck into service. I.T. is working on their network core project. Police purchased body cameras. We do have a reimbursable grant for those body cameras, so we should be seeing quite a sizable amount, about $250,000, come back to us for those body cameras. Police also purchased a small vehicle to be used at community service events, and we made some more improvements at 839 Todd Court. So, those are the highlights. Happy to answer any questions there may be.
Questions for Eric?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bills and payroll. Do I have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
And Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now's the time of our meeting where we offer an opportunity for public to comment on non-agenda items. It is a time where we listen. We don't necessarily engage or debate, but we do listen to public comment. I see one person signed up. Arnie, how do I pronounce your last name, Arnie? Maddox?
Used to be Polish, now it's Polish.
Please come up, Arnie. And I think you want to talk about veterans.
Yes, sir.
Please.
I got three minutes, right?
Yep.
First thing they should do for the veterans when they get a president-elect is hire 500 counselors for the veterans. Put three counselors in every hospital in the country, 151 hospitals, give them 24-hour care, and when the veteran wakes up with PTSD, they comfort them. And the family should have headphones on with the veteran that has no arms and no legs, but he's still alive. They give him some joy before he dies for our country. I'm having a little brain freeze. Is that okay?
You take your time. We're with you.
22 veterans kill themselves, suicide, every day. There's 600,000 left Vietnam veterans left. There must be two or three million veterans in the world. Also, I'd like to say Arnold Fuddo is a friend of mine. I don't know if you know him, but
Yes, we do.
That guy has gumption. That guy's got guts. He has the will to live no matter what happens. And I know him well. I know what he's been through.
You got, we'll let you know when you, don't worry about it. We'll let you know when you're close. Take your time.
Okay, I'm a little nervous. I want to be a motivational speaker. Okay. So, I think the president should take care of the veterans better than all the presidents. The veterans should be number one. Number two is the homeless. Number three is the middle class. They should take care of the middle class, because the middle class said, "I have to go back to work. I broke my butt as an IBW-134 electrician. I got electrocution a thousand times shocks. I'm on disability, but I survive. I'm a Catholic. I believe in God. I've had many miracles happen in my life." Let's go back to the veterans for a second. They deserve the best care in the world. There are people out on their yachts sipping champagne and yacht, and they're multimillionaires. You think they'd pay some money for the veterans? No. We should get the money from NASA, $10 billion from NASA, and pay for the veterans' care.
I can hear you're passionate about the veterans.
I met my, one of my friends I met on the golf course in Lake Park. First time I shook his hand, I knew he was going to be my friend for life. He was a Vietnam veteran. He made it through without a scratch. And when he was dying in pain and having surgery, he prayed for me. Now, that's a friend. That's a friend once in a lifetime. He died three years ago on the 27th of April. My birthday's on the 27th. He was, and he was, his birthday was June 18th. When we played golf, I got a hole-in-one on 18.
There's something there.
Yes.
You've got about 30 seconds.
30 seconds?
Sure.
I think that with the presidency, I think that both of them are going to run. And I was thinking someone else should run with them. I don't know what your policy is, who you vote for, but that's your own private business, because you have the freedom of speech. Can I close with a joke?
Sure.
I hope the attorneys don't get mad.
No.
How come attorneys don't play golf?
Why is that, Arnie?
Because they can't stand the fairway.
Nice. Nice. Thanks for your comments.
I wish you and your family, friends, and relatives good health always. Should anyone's time come, please, God, don't let them suffer. May they rest in peace, have eternal life. Amen in Jesus' name.
Thanks, Arnie. Have a good evening. Thank you for taking the time. Consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. I'll read them and then ask for a vote. Item 2455-1, ordinance authorizing an amendment to the signage plan for Deerfield Square to allow for signage where Air Sculpt is second-floor tenant of the 720 Waukegan Road building, including necessary exceptions in the Deerfield Square Shopping Center. And item 2464, a resolution authorizing a grant in Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval?
Second? Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next three items are regarding the same thing. The first is item 2460, a public hearing on an annexation agreement with the RTA for the annexation of property, Lake Cook Metro Station. I'm first going to call for a motion to open up the public hearing, and then Andrew will give us a presentation. So, is there a motion? I'll open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Just going to work to pull up one air photo here. Okay. In accordance with the state statute, tonight's, notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the Deerfield Review on May 16. Tonight's public hearing is to consider testimony with respect to the proposed intergovernmental agreement and annexation agreement to annex a small portion of railroad and right-of-way from unincorporated Cook County and owned by Metro into the Village of Deerfield. Before you is a picture depicting that area. Hopefully everyone can see that here. The annexation will allow for the contiguity as it relates to the Continental Development in the back of Deerbrook Mall and about 10 acres. The transit-oriented development will have pedestrian access to the Lake Cook Road Metro Station, and this annexation will allow for that portion of the tracks to be located within the corporate limits of the village. Regardless of how the Continental Development matter moves forward, the staff is recommending that this annexation proceed. In no way will the annexation negatively affect Metro's operations, their use of the tracks, or the right-of-way for commuter and railroad purposes. Staffs worked with the village attorney to prepare the accompanying resolution and ordinance that would effectuate the annexation of the property. No public comments have been received to date, and staff recommends moving forward with adoption of the resolution and the ordinance following the conclusion of tonight's public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any comment from the public? Okay, so, no comments from the public. Any questions for Andrew?
Yes, I had talked to Andrew before the meeting. I think it's very important in this particular development because of the location of this transit-oriented development housing and the clientele that we hope will use it and will use the Metro system to get downtown or wherever they're going from their location, located behind the shopping center, but at the tracks. Now, at the moment, we have a station there, but there is no reason for people to go west across the tracks, because there's nothing there. I would like very strongly to recommend, and I'm not sure that we do it through the village, or we do it through Metro, or we do it through the RTA, or we do it through the state of Illinois, I'm not quite sure who, but I feel very strongly that when this is done, there will be a pedestrian crosswalk from the development to the station. The people who use it will have to cross the tracks and get to the other side to get to the ticket window, or the ticket machine these days. I'm a little behind the times, to get the train to go into town. This is a place where they're not used to seeing trains. The crosswalk in Deerfield, which we have, people are very used to it. It's very open. This is not, because you have buildings around it. And I feel very strongly that we should equip this crossing, whoever puts it in, with audio and visual warnings. Audio meaning crossing bell, visual meaning flashing lights to show when the trains are coming. A number of the trains, including Metro, don't stop. And I think people are probably used to having them stop and slow down. They don't. Where I live, and being an old railroad man, I hear the signals. I know what the signals mean. It means there's some obstruction on the track. It's not always construction. Very often, it's people. And they have to cross the track to wait for the train to go into town. Getting off, they get off on the west side, and they can just walk to their home. I'm not asking for crossing gates, because I think these are probably more dangerous in this situation, people trying to go over them or under them. But I think we do need that kind of, that kind of warning to let the computer, the commuters, rather, and the passengers know that there are trains, both Metro and freight, and occasional Amtrak, many of which don't stop, and they should be aware of it. So, I think for a safety measure and to make sure our citizens, who are going to be Deerfield citizens in this development, are still with us over the years, I'd like to, I'd like to ask that we try and find out who is responsible and how to go about getting it, and then try and get it, whatever the need may be. That's really what I'm asking.
So, a couple things. Bob, I totally agree with what you're saying. So, when the, when the time comes, we will have a responsible party, whether it's us, Metro, Continental, or all of us, make sure that appropriate improvements are installed there.
And state of the art.
State of the art.
Whatever that looks like at that time, because that stuff evolves, right?
And I think that's also, we have, do we need to go through ICC to make sure that it's done?
Yes.
For the regulation. So, yes, Bob, your point is well taken, and we will do it, or have it done. Any other comments or questions about this for Andrew before we close the public hearing? Okay, a motion to
I have one thing. So, and I want to apologize because I just realized it. So, we have, so this agreement that we're on the public hearing for has gone through, it's been, what, two years, approximately three years?
Yeah, at least.
That this has been discussed with Metro. And I just realized, I was just looking at it, and the agreement that is in the packet is not the final. There was one change, difference. So, I just want to make sure I explain what it is, and we will make sure we swap it out, which is the version that is in here talks about in the annexation agreement that we will rezone the property to the public lands district. One of the last changes that Metro wanted was
No zoning change.
Not to include that in there, that it will be designated, kind of like our rights-of-way are in the village. We don't zone, for example, Deerfield Road. It really doesn't affect anything in terms of the village, because it's a Metro train track and platform. So, in many ways, it's more protective of the village anyway, because if they were ever to sell the property, it's not zoned for residential, commercial, and the like. So, with that one item out, when we will, in the execution copy, make sure that the right one is in. That's the only difference.
You want to strike a clause, then?
This, this, this resolution allows us to agree, to approve it in substantially this form, so that language is there, and has been noted, all of the right-of-way in the village is unzoned.
So, with that in mind, does anyone have any objection to having this changed based on Ben's saying?
To make it consistent with our practice.
Yeah, we're not rezoning it. It's just going to be right-of-way. That's going to be a, which is now the zoning designation, but that's how it's going to be identified as we've done otherwise, other places. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
All right. Now, now I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need a motion to approve the annexation agreement?
So, now we need the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, we close the public hearing.
Yes, now we're going to, okay. Item 2461, a resolution approving an IGA and the annexation agreement that we just talked about between the Village of Deerfield and the RTA.
With the one change as
With the one change as Ben just described.
On the rezone.
Move approval?
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
And the third item in this, in this grouping, trilogy, trifecta, is the ordinance annexing certain property owned by the RTA. So, now, this is the ordinance where we annex it.
Move approval?
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
And Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before you leave, any updates on Continental, on anticipated construction groundbreaking, or any news on that?
They have to come back for final.
Or when they're coming back for final?
We don't have a date yet for the final approval. We do expect them to receive all of the land use approvals by the end of this year. So, it probably, it would come back to this board, anticipating October, November was when this board would see it again. But we don't have that date set with the Plan Commission quite yet.
Great.
And, Your Honor, I just want to thank staff and the village attorney. This annexation has been on my to-do list since I got here, just because it's a, we just needed to clean it up. So, this gave us the, everybody was interested in doing it, so I'm checking off one of my boxes, just
There you go.
Anyway, thanks to everybody for working hard on what's seemingly a little weird and a little eccentric, but it's an important thing to get done. So, thanks to everybody.
Item 2462, resolution approving WRF bio-solids study. Task order 2402.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment process, there are three constituents that are created, and those three are clean water, which we're all familiar with, grit, which is paper, plastic, et cetera, that comes out of the wastewater, and then bio-solids, or sludge, as we used to call it. Now, we're calling it bio-solids. But bio-solids handling is something that is on the forefront of wastewater treatment and is a big topic of discussion in that for, in that group. We have a permit right now, which is, which is on a five-year cycle, to operate our wastewater treatment plan. That permit allows us to land-apply our bio-solids. And so, what that means is we take our bio-solids twice a year, usually in the spring and the fall. We have a specialized vendor come. They load that into semi-trucks, and they take that to a farm field, which is, you know, typically somewhere in the Six County area, and they, they spread that and they incorporate that into the soil. It's used due to the high nitrogen and phosphorus content It's used due to the high nitrogen and phosphorus content, that material is a great fertilizer. As part of our current five-year permit cycle that we have with the EPA, we're allowed to do that, but we also had a requirement to remove phosphorus from our wastewater as part of the treatment process. That's a feric treatment, it's a chemical process that treats the wastewater and pulls the phosphorus out of suspension. What that does is, part of that creates additional bio-solids. So now, we're used to handling 2,000 cubic yards of bio-solids, we're now handling 2,500, 3,000 cubic yards of bio-solids, and we need to figure out a plan to make that happen. Is it a third haul? Is it, you know, a haul in the middle of the summer, which we know is not a good option for us? Is it storage, additional storage, where we have room on the property to build an additional building so that we can store additional bio-solids in that building? Or do we construct a dryer? So these are the options that are in front of us. Landfilling is also an option, but it's probably not the most cost-effective or environmentally friendly solution. So we are looking for solutions right now, and the reason why I'm being relatively long-winded on this is that you'll probably hear more about this as we move forward into the budget process. And part of the study is to give us an idea of what some of the costs are for these different options that we have in front of us. And then we can have further and more educated discussion with this group about how we're planning to facilitate this over the next three to five years when we sit down and do budget. So with that, we have selected Strand Associates. They're a firm that designed our wastewater treatment plant. They designed our phosphorus upgrade that we did last year, and they're very familiar with our operation. They've also done similar studies and have designed and implemented dryers, et cetera, and other processes at other wastewater treatment plants throughout the country. So we feel that they're well qualified for this project. It's relatively, it's $25,000 and $25,800 to do the project, and we think that we'll have some idea by late August, so that when we sit down and have these discussions-
So budget time.
We can, like I said, we can have an intelligent discussion about what the options are in front of us and make a recommendation to the board.
So this situation is not unique just to us, other communities are facing the same thing?
That's correct, and part of that is, you know, not only for us, the additional creation of additional, you know, 20% additional bio-solids, but it's also PFAS. And the way, I have difficulty pronouncing what PFAS actually means, I think you guys are all familiar with forever chemicals or nanoplastics, and that is, that's in our wastewater, and it's something that, you know, we are very, the EPA is very close to regulating that further, and if they do, it may come to a point where they say, no more land application of your bio-solids. You have to determine a different method of disposing of those bio-solids.
Isn't that something Strand will take into consideration when it does its study?
It is, and they're involved with all the groups, as are we, you know, so we've got our ear to the ground, kind of listening to hear what might be coming down the pipeline with respect to bio-solids handling, and that's part of the reason why we're starting to, you know, kick off this, initiate this study. Not something that we had originally planned for as part of, you know, part of our capital program this year, but also there's funding in the budget, and we thought it'd be a good time to jump off and bring the board up to speed with it.
And you know, this is part of the evolution of the wastewater treatment facility, and the world, obviously, but Strand has been with us from the beginning, advising us on when we built it and as we get new requirements. All of this, the phosphorus stuff and now the PFAs is going to be a big deal.
Yes.
And it's going to be required of everybody. So I feel very comfortable having them look at it, but this may require us to make a big change.
It may. Physical changes out there?
Yeah.
Buildings?
Yeah.
And Bob, how much do we spend on disposal right now on an annual basis?
Well, right now, we're spending around $100,000. So the price went from, you know, say, three, four years ago, we were paying about $22 a cubic yard to haul this material out, now we're paying about 40, you know, about $20, basically double the price.
Is that because of the more the price of fuel?
It's tied to the price of fuel.
Where you take it, that's a lot of it.
Distance, now we're going, it's being hauled further. And there aren't that many vendors out there that do this work, so it-
So that's a thing too, yeah.
So when you think about, you know, this is a, the treatment plant is a 50-year investment, you think about $100,000 every year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and what's the alternative to that?
And potentially going up to 150?
So let's make a good choice for the next 20 years, right? I mean, I think that's kind of the thought there, and let's figure out how to get that done and pay for it and do it in an environmentally responsible way, of course.
Right.
Right.
The state of the art when we built the place.
And it still is.
Those of us who've been around a long, long time can remember every time that we had the, getting rid of the solids. We had people who were complaining about the trucks and the noise and all the rest, that has kind of whittled down to where we don't hear it anymore, so we must be doing a good job.
We don't hear too many complaints. We don't hear too many complaints, usually our hauling is done fall in spring. You know, it's widely weather-dependent, you know, if we have a lot of rain, makes it challenging for us to haul it out. And we did haul out in April, usually try to get things hauled out before May hits, and then again in November, November, December.
Do you, like, when you haul, do you check the prevailing winds, like which way the winds are blowing?
No, we don't, but, you know, we do, you know, during certain operations, like when we run generators and stuff, you know, we do that, but as part of, you know, the bio-solids hauling, we want to get it out.
Yep, understood.
And if we have a field to go to, we-
And it's more about the weather conditions at the field you're going to, because if that field's wet, they can't do it.
They won't let you dump it.
If it's too wet, you can't haul it there.
There's a lot of variables they're trying to cover.
Absolutely. The recommendation stands to bring on Strand Associates, waive competitive bidding, and bring on Strand as part of this study, $25,800. We do have money in the budget that we can cover this cost with.
Move approval.
Hold on, before we do the-
Please ask a question. This piece of paper that was passed out to us says that it's scheduled for completion by October 31st, 2024.
I know I'm the newbie, but I thought that the budget discussions are in the summer,
so this doesn't seem like it will line up in time.
Yeah, so just the goal for us is to have, just to have round numbers ready to go for budget discussions in August. So if we can just get like a one-sheet, two-sheet page from Strand that just says, here are your options and here's what we think they'll cost, then we'll follow up with the study, with the final report later on in October.
Do we need to add that? We need to add that to our agreement with Strand?
Well, by the time we get into, by the time we finalize our budget, we'll have solid numbers, and at that point, everybody will be well-informed on the subject, and I would say likely we'll have a three-to-five-year plan on how we're going to be handling it.
Good.
Yeah, sorry, just had a question.
Comments from the public, anything, any other comments from the trustees? I know, Mayor.
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2463, resolution to increase the contract for Phase III engineering services for Zion Woods.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the title suggests, we're looking for approval to increase the Phase III contract for the Zion Woods construction project. As we know, this is a nine-acre site that's adding 25 affordable rental apartments to the village of Deerfield. Originally approved in 2021, the contractor started in late '21 with mass grading and storm runner components, completing at the end of 2022. Unfortunately, throughout 2023, due to FEMA applications being reviewed and then the funding that was needed to be secured for the building pad after that, it kind of sat idle all of last year. However, early this year, they started up again with building the pad and getting the site utilities installed. Unfortunately, in early, or in 2021, when this contract was originally approved with Ciorba Group, no one anticipated this project going into 2025, which is the new completion date. Therefore, they did run out of money, or are nearly ran out of money, and now we're coming back to increase that contract or that original contract by the, by a cost of roughly $50,000. The original contract of 106, again, was from a 2021 number and went about a two-year construction timeline. Like many developments in the village, we did strike an agreement with the developer regarding these costs and the construction observation costs, so all costs that are associated with this work is fully reimbursable by the developer. So we are facilitating the contract, executing it, and handling the Phase III contractor, however, it is fully reimbursable by the developer.
And they're aware of that?
They are, yep, and we've put this in front of them already.
Good.
They're aware of it, they know this is coming, they understand it as well, it's just the longer this project goes, the more money it does take. Took a long time to plan, and then now we're luckily in the home stretch now, but it's still taking a little bit longer with construction. So at this point, staff recommends that the village board approve the resolution to increase Ciorba's contract for Phase III engineering services for the Zion Woods development by the amount of $49,998.30.
Questions? Comments?
Does their contract, the developer's contract, take into account delays and additional expenses such as this?
So any costs, and we've put this in front of them, they're fully aware, they understand-
So it's like a pass, do we pay?
It is, 100%, yes. So we've already issued a couple reimbursement request letters, and there'll be more coming. You know, we usually do this annually, so before they probably even get final approval from the village, they'll have to square up with the village on these costs.
And they recognize the delays, they're not objecting, it's all part of just the challenges of this project.
It's a tough site.
Things come to those who wait.
Well, and the commitment to build this project is still so very strong.
Absolutely.
Why the 30 cents?
It's a very good question, I don't know. I kind of wish you'd just taken off, but that was their contract still.
I am so thrilled, everyone's a little spicy tonight, that's good. And as I recall, they're looking at occupancy about a year from now, right?
Yep, June timeline, so hopefully they're able to maintain that timeline and we can get people in.
Good.
Very nice to see it's completed.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution ratifying the purchase of a Ford electric pickup truck. Bobby, you got this one and the next one, and I wish you good luck with this board tonight, so.
Yes, sir, thank you.
He wore his sassy tie, he's funny.
In 2021, the village board passed a plan to reduce our carbon footprint, and as part of that plan, the goal was to take the 16 administrative vehicles that we have that were gas-powered vehicles and replace those with electric-powered vehicles or hybrid vehicles. In 2022, the village board adopted a resolution or an ordinance that allows the village manager to make purchases of vehicles, as long as they're budgeted for, we can make purchases of those vehicles off of the dealer lots, which is what we had to do in this case. It's difficult to put your hands on a vehicle at this time, as you all know, and EVs and hybrids are no longer part of the state bid process, so we can't go to our normal Sourcewell or other vendors that we go through that are involved in state bidding to make purchases on half-ton and 3/4-ton pickup trucks. So what we do is we go to local area vendors, car dealers that have vehicles on their lots, and we ask them for pricing, and we pick what we think is the best pricing for the vehicles. It's a benefit if the vendor has done business with the village before in the past, and since we have a rapport with Breedeman, we have procured this Ford F-150 all-electric pickup truck from them.
And when did we order it?
We didn't order it, so we're unable to order vehicles right now. Ford isn't taking orders for either hybrids or EVs.
Oh, okay.
So it needs to be on their lot, it needs to be available for sale, and then we make, and then we go there and we make the purchase. And so, you know, working with Kent Village Manager's Office and Eric Burke, we were able to make this purchase and the next purchase that's up in front of the board as well. So with that, we're requesting that the village board approve the purchase of the Ford F-150 Lightning. The purchase price is $51,781.03. We did trade in a Ford Taurus on this, it's a 2012 Ford Taurus, we got $2,000 for the trade, and this is replacing, we're just shifting vehicles around, and so this is replacing the Ford Explorer that was formerly used by the Building Division Supervisor, and this, you know, so this is an all-electric pickup truck, charging is already in place, and will be in use for the new Building Division Supervisor when that person arrives.
Great. Questions? Motion to approve the resolution?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So this matter, and the next one that you're going to talk about, just one second, which I'm sure is similar, is in furtherance of our carbon reduction efforts. And to that, I want to thank Mary for your efforts on the Greenhouse Gas Group. You guys have done a great job.
And Elaine.
And Elaine, of course.
And Andrew.
And the other members of the-
And the other members of the staff, and the other members of the task force, and everybody who's chipped in, and we're still working on it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for everyone, for all of your efforts, because we're getting there and we're making progress, and we're doing good things in terms of our sustainability, so really appreciate it. Next one is a resolution ratifying the purchase of the Ford 150 hybrid pickup.
So this truck varies a little bit from the last purchase. This is a hybrid pickup truck, and this is the first hybrid that we've brought into our fleet. We thought that it would be good to have a hybrid in the fleet to diversify what we have. Right now, we're finding that EVs are okay for inspections and so forth within the village. They're really great for driving around within the village and having a short-range type of trips. In public works, our training and our other, you know, other needs are such that, you know, some of our vehicles need to go on the road, Springfield, different parts of the state, for conferences, training, et cetera. And we have found some difficulty in having strictly electronic, or EVs in our fleet and trying to find, scrambling to find a way to get to some of these training courses that we have with village vehicles. With that, we also believe that trying out a hybrid vehicle in the public works fleet is a good practice for us. If the vendors or the manufacturers go from a half-ton, which this is, to a 3/4-ton pickup truck, this would, could potentially be a viable option for us to use as a plow truck. And so testing this out and determining whether this works for us in our operation is really important. And so with that, we did, again, purchase this vehicle from Breedeman Ford. These vehicles are budgeted for as part of our green initiative fund that we have in the capital improvement program, so it's part of, it's part of the plan to reduce our carbon footprint, and this is just another replacement of a vehicle that's a gas-for-vehicle in the fleet, and it's worked out really well so far. And the purchase price from Breedeman, oh, one more thing I should mention, is that you may notice if you're out and about and you see some of our EVs, other, say, green vehicles that we have in the village, they aren't what you would typically consider municipal vehicle. They have a little bit nicer wheels, they have a little bit higher-end package than you'd normally get, and the reason why that is, is because, as I'd mentioned, we're not purchasing these through the state bid anymore, they aren't available at that level. So the very bottom level of vehicle that we can buy for a pickup truck is an XLT, it It comes a little bit nicer package, doesn't have leather seats or anything, or a sunroof or anything like that, but it is a little bit nicer truck than we're used to seeing. So just as you're out and about, if you see that, that's the reason why.
It's what you can get. That's the problem.
It's what we can put our hands on, and, you know, that could change, you know, in the next three to five years, but for right now, this is what we have.
Okay, sir.
So with that, we did make this purchase from Breedeman Ford, and the purchase price was $58,319.03. It's consistent with other vehicles that we've purchased. I know the EV was 51, but we've purchased EVs from 51 to 65. They're in that kind of ballpark. They're all really pretty much the same. The recommendation is for the approval or ratification of the purchase from Breedeman Ford.
And Bob?
Comments?
Let me just jump in a little bit. We've talked about the pulling trailers, doing additional duty as part of the hybrid value. The electric vehicles just really lose their juice when you're doing extra-duty stuff, especially in cold weather. So you think about our guys, when some of their hardest stuff they have to do is in cold weather. So the hybrid option, and Bobby, maybe you want to just add to that, but that's been our conversation.
It is, you know, so I did, you know, I kind of started down that road, too, in, you know, kind of talking a little bit about, you know, electric vehicles and how they fit into our operation. You know, they're great for driving around, doing inspections. You need higher ground clearance. You're on construction sites. You're doing things that, you know, you've got paint, you've got other things in the truck, you know, that are, you know, not really for a car, you know, type of thing. But then also, you know, in the winter, when we need trucks the most, you know, EVs aren't, they don't hold a charge. And while they may still be good for getting around the village and doing inspections, they're not going to be great for, you know, for other operations that we need to do throughout the village. As I mentioned, you know, so this would be the second hybrid that we have in the fleet. We currently have one that's an inspector car. And then this one, this has a little bit higher ground clearance, so this is designed to go on a construction site, designed to go wherever we need it to go in the snow and everything like that. And if we do have, if this vendor, if this manufacturer comes out with a 3/4-ton truck, we've already tested the half-ton, and it could be a viable alternative for plowing. And we do use a lot of 3/4-ton trucks in our plowing operation.
Well, the good thing is this enables us to continue our commitment to reducing our carbon footprint and our greenhouse gas emissions, at the same time being able to do the work we need to do, given the evolution of the trucking industry and cars. Within 10 years, I'm assuming, everybody's assuming this picture's going to change. You know, they're ramping up, they're, the availability. I mean, we're in a crazy situation right now where you have to go in the dead of night and find secret cars on car lots, and we have to grab them. But if that's what we have to do, that's what we'll do. But if we get the hybrid, it enables us to continue, you know, steps on the road to where we need to get. So, you know, I think it's a great idea that we're being creative.
Can the half-ton hybrid do any light plowing?
We do some plowing with half-ton trucks. However, most of it is done with 3/4-ton at a minimum. Half-ton just doesn't really have the weight and the power to push snow, especially if we have heavy snow. That's kind of why.
In a pinch, you could do a parking lot or something like that.
Usually cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it could be a cul-de-sac plow truck.
I am confident the Public Works Department will find a use that is appropriate.
I think so, too, for $60,000.
And economical.
Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
And Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
As for discussion, my mayor and board of trustees, I got a couple of things. Earlier in our consent agenda, we had a resolution authorizing a grant at Lake County Convention Visitor Bureau. If anyone looked closely at the packet, we saw a young Justin Keenan probably displayed with his photograph there just a couple of years ago. So that was fun to see. Also, earlier in the meeting, we did pass two proclamations, and I made comment, and I want to say it again, those proclamations really spoke to inclusivity and dignity and equality, and that's what our community's all about. And that's why I wanted to say something then and something now about the significance of those proclamations in particular. Last week, we had the Memorial Day celebration and ceremony, starting at Jewett Park and then moving over to the cemetery, which was terrific. It was a beautiful day. And Ann from the library, I forgot her last name, but she was here, she gave a real nice perspective on some of the history, and that was really good to know and good to learn about. Special day for me. I just think those guys are great. Last weekend's art festival was great, although it was rained out Saturday afternoon, which is unfortunate. But Sunday was a beautiful day, and some of the stuff that the artists displayed were just really nice, and it laid out well. We got rave reviews from the vendors, from the organizer, and great job to staff for putting that together, Public Works, David, Police. It really went well. So congratulations to everyone involved with that. Food trucks will be on the 12th this month and not the 19th in recognition of and in respect to June 19th, the holiday of June 19th. So it'll be on June 12th. And then the other thing is just thinking about the halfway point of the year for us. And we've preliminarily approved a couple of major projects. We're in a position to approve or preliminarily approve potentially two more projects in the coming months, and then finally approve those preliminarily approved projects with groundbreakings on perhaps three. And those are big deals, and it's important, and it shows our commitment to improvement into community, and we're only halfway, halfway into the year. So with that, I want to thank staff for all the hard work and this board for all of its hard work on getting us there. So thank you.
And plan commission and advisory.
And plan commission.
All the teams, right.
And all the team, the entire team, because we really have a lot of great things just the first six months and a lot of great things coming up for the latter, second half of this year. Kent?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
All right. Anyone? Bob? One of the many weird things about me is that I'm a voracious reader, and I read everything that comes into the house, which is a lot. And in reading the Crane Chicago Business today, it's actually, yeah, Monday edition, it's on time this time, there's a company called Lanza Jet, L-A-N-Z-A-J-E-T.
Where Andrew was at for a presentation about a week ago with Jessica.
And they have, they are now in Deerfield.
Yep.
I wasn't quite sure when I read it. I know they're into new, and this is for Mary, new safe and cleaner jet fuels for the jet planes. I don't know whether they actually have a jet fleet and they're a charter line also, but their headquarters in Deerfield, and I'm looking forward to learning more about them.
Andrew, could you just bring the group up to speed on what you know about that group since you were down there with Jessica?
Yes, thank you. Staff attended Lanza Jet's headquarters here in Deerfield at Corporate 500. They do sustainable aviation fuel, so that's the technology that they're trying to advance, and they have partners. There's the Bill Gates Foundation's part of them. Various airlines, of course, are partners. So it really is a big deal. They've been covered a couple times in different publications. And so we went there, we were invited to go speak to them, I think it must have been in April, because it was around Earth Day and sustainability initiatives, and we strengthened our partnership with them. We've invited them to even participate perhaps on the Greenhouse Gas Committee.